Good evening.
Hey there.
Good afternoon.
I don't know why I thought everybody was going to be here in person, that we were doing like in-person like presentations.
Yeah, the lights aren't in the conference room, in the council room.
I think Jim just came back in. He was here and I think he left and now he came back.
So Sarah, is it possible to see everybody on this screen?
Um, which one?
The one parallel with where I'm at. That's where I usually look to see. There we go. They still have their cameras on.
I don't know like where everybody is. It's like two minutes to start.
I got three minutes. I'm gonna grab a water real quick. Anybody need anything, Tom?
I'm fine, thank you.
Sarah, you need anything?
No, I'm good, thanks, Josh.
Is everybody on Zoom?
Yeah, apparently so. I apparently missed the memo on that one.
Should I stay in there or stay out here?
No, you can stay out here. Brian's gonna be in here too.
What do you say, Sarah? You ready to go? Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This Celine City Council Work Meeting on Monday, the 22nd at 6:30 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Girbaugh, CO, Dylan, Delorco, Kamara Sulek, and Kraus. From city staff, I believe we have city manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, I think Parks and Rec Director Scruggs is with us. Sarah, is it possible to go back to the previous screen where I can see everybody?
Yeah.
Thank you. And it looks like city engineer Fordice is also present this evening. We also have several members of our work, or excuse me, our risk mitigation working group. And in addition to myself, Chairperson Girbaugh, and council member Delorco, we have the facilitator Lori Champion, and members-at-large John Ambrose, Mitch Road, and Rebecca Schneider. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So moved?
Moved by Dylan to approve as submitted?
Yes.
Seconded?
Was that seconded by Kamara Sulek?
Yes, sir.
Very good. All those in favor approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. I would defer to the city clerk, Clerk Royal. Did we receive any questions or comments in advance of tonight's meeting via email?
No, sir.
And did we receive any comments or questions under the chat icon that appears on the bottom of the screen if you're participating via Zoom?
No, sir.
Okay. The record will reflect there are no public comments. Then we will proceed to the first of our two discussion items of the evening. And the first is the final report from the Risk Mitigation Working Group. Here's how this is gonna work this evening, folks. In just a moment, I'm gonna turn it over to Chairperson, Mayor Pro Tem, Dean Girbaugh to give, I think, what will be an executive summary of the risk mitigation analysis. He will subsequently turn it over to Lori Champion, the facilitator of the working committee, to go into some detail and to go over the PowerPoint that was provided in your packet. At the conclusion of Ms. Champion's remarks, I will share a few thoughts, and I think the city manager will as well. I'd also welcome any additional insights or perspective.
Executive summary review, and then move into our methodology, the risk assessment approach that we took, how we prioritized our risks, and our recommendations. It was our honor to do this from a perspective of all the individuals were professional beyond approach in trying to address concerns and things as we moved forward on this report. One of the things that you have to realize is that getting individuals to contribute in such a manner in which to be honest and open was one of the best benefits, I believe, our city has seen from a team perspective of not only our individuals on the task force, but also of our staff, the citizens within our community, and even our legislative representatives who participated. As you look into our executive summary, you'll notice that the seven members consisted of myself, Lori Champion, John Ambrose, Rebecca Schneider, Dr. Mitchell Road, Mayor Morrow, and council member Jim Delorco. Each member came forward with their background in a number of areas of expertise, data analysis, engineering, computer technology, legislative issues. So we had a great coverage of the number of different aspects in which to assess and answer and ask questions. The working group consisted of a number of meetings or aspects of which we went forward with in terms of meeting with various commissions, various organizations within our community, representatives, staff members, directors, all levels of management and levels of expertise within our own organizations. It was my appreciation was to have the individual, Ms. Champion, as the individual that really understands and brought forth the expertise and the tools and the knowledge in how to approach this, and provide a methodology which we all agreed as the group was an appropriate way to move forward and to assess this information so that it had a validity and the ability to be accepted and hopefully used to better the community and our city operations moving forward. As you'll see as we go through it, we looked at over almost 200 specific risks that were identified. There were a number of things that each group brought up, things that were repeated, things that were new and unaware of. And so as we went through it, we attempted to try and organize all of those risks into a number of groups, and then identify those and identify them within a layer of priority from highest to higher to watch to be important, and Lori will address those going forward in a minute. There are also additional risks that we looked at that although they would be concern to risk, they're things that we have to watch, things that we have to be aware of, but currently we feel that those are things that you'll look and review on an annual basis. One of the things that we have to realize and make sure and identify is that risk is a responsibility of the city management team and council, and risk management concerns should and must be addressed by the city council and staff. That is a role of what we believe is what is the function of our expertise in terms of going forward and moving on to this. Some of the risks we identified were needed and expected immediate reaction from city management. We were concerned about safety and risk, some health and safety practices. We brought in a consultant to assess those concerns, and a report was delivered to council and to the manager in which we were able to then address and move forward in terms of helping to make sure that safety issues are one of our first priorities and making sure that it's a safe and work environment for all our staff and individuals that are participating in either construction or doing their day-to-day operations. In addition, there were some other things that we've already addressed by fixing things that were deferred maintenance in different operations, the waste treatment plant, water treatment plant, and also in the last six months, hiring of the resource management capabilities with our consultants to help address and begin moving forward on those aspects. And with that, I'd like to move over and give it to our, well, I would say, our facilitator, but really truly the leader that made this opportunity to be the best approach for which we could move as a city. Lori Champion is the managing director and client executive for McLe-- excuse me, for Marsh and McLennan Companies. She's also been an expert for Coca-Cola, risk manager, global risk management for Ford Motor Company, and a number of other businesses in which her career has provided us with the opportunity to address these things from a perspective of an enterprise and not just from our own small world, but from a global approach. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Champion.
You are so kind. Thank you, Dean, and thank you, Mayor, for your kind words. I'd just like to point out again that our whole working group is on the meeting tonight. They have been a true pleasure to work with throughout the entire project. Everyone paid an important role, brought specific experience and expertise to the table, and participated in this robust cross-functional project. So I thank you for your kind words. I will speak on behalf of the working group tonight, but please know this was truly a team effort all the way through the project. Would you all like me to share my screen with the report, or do you feel comfortable that everyone has the report to view this evening? What is best?
Lori, or Ms. Champion, excuse me, for the benefit of those who are watching remotely, especially staff, it might be valuable to do a screen share so that folks can reference the document or page of your PowerPoint that you're discussing. Perfect.
Very good. And then hopefully everyone is able to see this as I'm showing it at the moment. And you can certainly see that both the city of Celine and the Celine Public Library are prominently displayed in my search bar. I'm having trouble finding my, forgive me, my presentation mode. Well, hopefully everyone can see this adequately as they are at the moment. All right. So as we're going forward with the project, excuse me, this is going to be, unweave the, give me just a moment, I apologize, everyone.
Lori, I'll see if I can share it too.
We should be good now.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you so much. So in the report, of course, we have the executive summary that Dean has just shared. I'll take you through the project methodology and through the risk assessment. That resulted in a list of priority risks that we'll review briefly here this evening, and some major recommendations that the group has made. There are two appendices. Appendix A is the scope of interviews. So as Dean said, we interviewed 61 people in the course of this project and found everyone to be engaged in the discussion and interested in the process and into helping the working group understand the risks. So that was incredibly helpful. Appendix B is the risk assessment scales, where we assess the risks on both likelihood, how likely are they to happen, and impact, what is the potential impact to the city if the risks occur. So as we look at the project methodology, a couple things to think about here. When we talk about risk, we're talking about things that could happen, or they may be happening today. But not every risk in here, because it's in the report, that doesn't mean that we think it's happening today. There are some things in the report that we hope never happen in the life of the city. So certainly catastrophic type of risks. We hope we never have a 500-year weather event, and we hope we never have a significant chemical spill or something like that. But these are risks that organizations face. Hopefully, they are rare. But part of the discussion is around thinking about what could happen, and is the city ready to address those things in a reasonable fashion? So you'll hear me use the word reasonable or practical quite often in this discussion, but that's really the thought process that we're going through. The other sort of hallmark of this process is to go at it, you know, in a sort of fact-based manner, looking cross-functionally, and that's why this group is coming from different areas of expertise and different backgrounds. So that as a group, as a team, our perspectives are stronger than any individual person, and we're able to look at this assessment without being, you know, too mired in what perhaps has happened in the past, and without emotion, and hopefully, you know, individual sole perspectives on the risk. materials provided by the city throughout the various departments. We looked at the interviews, of course, some of them were, you know, most of them were about an hour in length, many were longer, so we looked at all of the information that came out of the interviews. As Dean said, if there were any immediate areas of concern, they were referred to the city manager and the city council for action. I thought that was really important. We found a few things that were concerning. One example was employee safety at the wastewater treatment plant, and that was addressed immediately through, you know, engaging a consultant to come in and assist the city with assessing any areas for action. So I think that's very good. It's a hallmark of a team that is interested in making improvements where that needs to happen. Following the interviews, we conducted this risk assessment exercise, where we looked at all of these risks, and there were over 200, and assessed them based on two main criteria. One is impact. What is the significance of this risk if it happens? We looked at financial impact, and we looked at impact to the health and safety of our city. We looked at the impact on people and on businesses, and we came up with a way of assessing all of these different types of risks in a consistent manner. As Dean said, this is a methodology that's used in very widely in different types of organizations. It's been around for 20 or 30 years. It's time-tested, and it enables us to look at different types of risks in a consistent manner and come up with a prioritization of those risks. We also looked at risks based on likelihood. Likelihood of occurring over a three-to-five-year time horizon. Likelihood means how likely is it that this risk could happen? It's not a probability. We did not do, you know, mathematical exercises or models to gauge the probability of these risks. That's another type of project. And not all risks are easy to assess from a mathematical standpoint. But we used a practical approach and a very consistent approach to look at how likely these might be. All right? So the end result of this is, as you move around this circle and you get into through the risk prioritization and validation in step three, we're really looking at the sort of what do you do about it phase, meaning what are the appropriate next steps? Where are there areas where the city might make improvements in its readiness to deal with some of these risks? And those are the risk mitigation recommendations that this team came up with together. So when we get into the actual risk summaries, you're going to see that there are specific recommendations for each of the higher priority risks that the team felt might be helpful to the city to consider as next steps. Now, of course, it's the city's responsibility and role to then take that information, thoroughly review it, and make decisions about what the right next step should be. Okay? And of course, we're at step five today in making our report. Now, when we look at the risk assessment itself, and you look at 200 risks, 200 risks is a lot of risks, how do we think about those in terms of how they group? And what's very interesting here is the pattern you see in the city of Celine is very typical of all organizations, including organizations of, you know, with more resources in organizations in different types of risk categories. So the city has about 28% of its risks in the higher priority classifications. That's very typical, and in fact, it's, in a lot of ways, it's less than what you might see in many other organizations. So that suggests that while there are things to be worked on, it's not a shocking number. As you move around the circle, about 30% of the risks are in what we're calling the important category, the next category of priority, things that you might look at in perhaps, you know, towards the end of the year or into 2022. But a solid 41% of those risks are either in what we call the noteworthy category, things to be aware of, but are not necessarily, you know, high priority for any change or improvement, and the watch category where the risks are considered to be well-managed and/or small and/or so rare in their occurrence that the city would not do anything differently or better at this time. Okay? So 75% of the risks, more or less, are in that, in the majority category of being things that the city should be aware of, but are not necessarily a high priority for action at this time. Okay? When we start to look at the actual risks now, and we're, I'm gonna take you first to this red category, highest priority, and then we'll walk through the pink, high priority, and the light pink, which is the priority risk. The highest priority risks here are those which have the, are most likely to occur combined with having a relatively high impact on the city if they were to occur. In every one of these categories, the risks are listed in alphabetical order. So the fact that a risk is the first on the list does not mean it's the highest priority. It just means it came first in the alphabetical order. Now let's walk through one of these for a moment. If you look at the risk, city management and workflow practices, which is the second on the list, there's a short definition underneath it. Risks related to management culture, decision processes, efficiency, and change, change management. Okay? So each of these risks has a high-level title, and it has a short definition to help the reader understand what that risk means. And then under the recommended action, based on what we heard from 61 people as we went across all these risks and all of these interviews, and based on the seven of us and our own experience and our perceptions and our understanding of what we were hearing and seeing and where we thought there might be areas for improvement, we came up with specific bullet points on some recommended actions. So one of the bullet points here is to adopt a management system that drives prioritization, planning, and efficient decision-making across and consistently across all areas. And there are other bullet points embedded in the risk for the city's consideration. Again, these are ideas, and they're suggestions. And they're here as a helper aid to the city as the working group completes its task and turns over the report to the city. These recommended actions are there for the city's consideration in terms of the path forward. All right? It's very possible, some of the recommended actions are going to be exactly what the city would like to do and things appropriate. It's also very possible that some of the bullet points, while they are well-meaning, may be situations where the city takes a look and says, "Great idea. We're actually doing something that's more valuable," or "We have a better idea, and that's what we're going to do." So this is a bridge, it's a transition point for the city's additional consideration. Now, I won't go through all the risks, because we would be here all night, but as you read the report, obviously, you're gonna see page two of the highest priority recommendations. Let me just remind you, those are the risks in the dark red. Okay? So these are the biggest risks and/or the most frequent risks, so in combination, they're the most concerning. The next grouping, high priority, just coming down one level below the highest priority risks, again, we have two pages, and so you're gonna be looking at this section at about 21 risks. Okay? The first group is 15, the next group is 21, and again, we're presenting these to you in alphabetical order. So let's take the first one, commercial investor perceptions. Risks related to how commercial investors view the city. And our recommended action is to really be aware of that in planning and decision-making, and develop some communication, communication plan around that. Now, there are other risks in this report that have a relationship to commercial investor perceptions, and those are noted as well. So let me talk about that for a minute. Whenever an organization does a risk map or risk profile like this, you are going to have risks that have a relationship to each other. And sometimes it's really important to look at those risks in combination as they're being planned for or addressed, and we know that. We did not complicate the report by drawing all the intersections between the different risks. That is work that some large organizations will do, because frankly, it gets very complicated for them otherwise. For an organization here like the city of Celine, we didn't feel that that was going to add a lot of value, and it'd probably complicate things unnecessarily. So again, you have the 21 risks here, and as the city is looking at them and considering next steps, there's going to be some natural places where some of these risks can be dealt with. with together. The last section is on the priority risks. And in this section, again, this is the third level of risk, so we're down two levels of priority. These are, this is the last grouping that we really feel the city should take a look at over the course of the year. Again, many of these risks are already being addressed within the city, but we've given some suggestions and ideas about, you know, how to manage that or how to approach some of that. So what's a great, what's a good example here? Gas or utility interruption, intermittent interruption of services. You know, what if we experience an interruption? Are we ready to manage that and address that? So these are services not controlled by the city, they're controlled by the external utilities. And some recommendations there are just to identify and prioritize any areas of concern. Okay? Make sure that we've done that homework and identify with the utility providers any solutions to address any gaps or concern. And incorporate that within the city's resiliency planning, which is another recommendation for consideration. All right? So that's actually a pretty substantial amount of work. So one of the things that we've also recommended here is that the city not try to tackle all 200 risks at one time. It's too much. So by looking at these first three groups of priority in order and working through them, when the time is right, we're saying that the city might then turn its attention to the remaining risks, conduct a fresh look to see if there's anything in these groups that should be reprioritized for action based on the city's resources at that time in the future. So if the city works through the first three groups of risk to see what actions need to be taken, perhaps around Q4 of this year, you might look at the next group, which is important, and then perhaps in 2022, look at the remaining two groups of risk. The most important thing in my advice to the city is to take a look at these risks in order, don't try to do too much, work through the risks, and certainly address anything that is a concern or anything where there's a major gap. And then reassess periodically to see if there's anything new that's been added or any areas that need to be reprioritized. Okay? The last point here is a final recommendation when you, when you look at this group of, this body of work, we would suggest that the city adopt an approach to have a fresh look at this on an annual basis. So the way it would work is, is you would form an annual risk assessment team, you would take a fresh look at the information, identify anything new that needs to be added to the list or anything that can be removed that's no longer valid. That's step two. Step three, conduct a prioritization exercise using the same tools and come up with a fresh profile. Very commonly, as organizations do this type of work, they're making risk better. And when that happens, sometimes those risks that were in the higher priority groups fall back in the lower priority groups. So taking an annual look at this is a great way to also look at what's been accomplished and understand the value that's being achieved for the resources that have been used to do the work. And then step four is a fresh look at what the mitigation plan is, and step five with, you know, periodic reporting to the city management and city council. So we think this annual process is something the city should consider going forward. It can be done without, you know, a tremendous amount of effort. The real work is the first time you do this. As you go forward, updating it becomes much easier if it's kept fresh. And the information can be used as an input to the strategic planning process. Okay? And so that, that is all about, as you're doing strategic planning, looking at what our major risks are and how well we're managing those, and using that information to make sure your strategic plan is helping you do the right things to make sure the city stays healthy and safe and productive and that we're all able to achieve the things that we want to do here in the city of Celine. That's a quick review. You've been kind to listen to all of that. Thank you so much. I do want to ask Colleen because, you know, in her role, it's so important that she have a, an ability to comment on this. Colleen, I don't know if you have any questions or any comments for the, for the working group at this point, and then, and then we'd love to have the other working group members comment as well.
No specific comments to the working group members. I'll just kind of add to that final recommendation, I guess, that I did have a chance to have a conversation with some members of the group and Mayor Marl to talk about how we as city leadership will put this plan into action. And I'm expecting that there'll be subsequent reporting on the part of, you know, myself and my department heads to prepare information related to what steps we are taking specifically in regards to some of those higher priority items first recognized by the group. And that may take a quarterly or a biannual approach depending on the need. But for us, I think also a very high priority starting point will be having the ability to discuss that implementation strategy and ongoing reporting standards with, with the committee as a whole. And I think Mayor Marl will speak to, you know, that preference on my part in his later comments. But, you know, at this time, just really appreciate the work that this has done. It's, it's always nice from a management perspective when you have very well-articulated goals.
So, thank you, Colleen. Let's ask the, the working group members.
If I may, Lori, let me start with Councilmember Del Orco, who's in council chambers, and then I will pivot to those who are participating remotely. So, Mr. Del Orco, is there anything that you would like to add this time as a member of the Risk Mitigation Working Committee?
Yeah, just to start, I want to thank Ms. Champion for all of her assistance in helping us, in helping to guide us through this process. I had never embarked on anything like this before, even in my career and my profession. And to me, having had the opportunity to sit in on these interviews with members of staff at all layers of the organization from top to bottom, gave me an intimate knowledge of what we face as a city in terms of, of risks. And what came out of this exercise was a critical and essential roadmap to have a plan of action to address and mitigate the risks that we face as a city. And it was a very wholesome learning experience for me and my colleagues as well. I am grateful for the opportunity to have served on this board. And I think one of the interesting things that came out of it is, Lori was right, we had so many risks to look at in the beginning, it was overwhelming. And we sat down and rated those based on impact and likelihood, and the most essential aspects of what we need to deal with as a city were distilled to the top of the surface. And that gives us a unique opportunity to understand how to prioritize these tasks and how to go about making city business more efficient moving forward and minimizing the risks that we face as a city. So I'm happy to answer any questions that my colleagues may have. I feel like I have an inside knowledge of the process and what went into this, and I don't really have any questions because I've spent an inordinate amount of hours working on the group, so I'm here to, if anybody has any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Del Orco. Let me pivot to those participating remotely in the event that they have anything they would like to add. Let me start with Rebecca Schneider. Mrs. Schneider, would you care to add anything as a member of the Risk Mitigation Working Group?
I would just say that it was, it was a wonderful experience, and Lori really has a system for making sense of all this stuff so that it works. And I think that it should be used as a good tool for the city going forward, and it should be revisited to make sure it's a current tool. But I enjoyed it. The, the biggest takeaway I had is there are a lot of people who work in the city who really care a great deal about our city and want to do whatever they can to make this a great place for the, for its residents.
Thank you. Well put, Rebecca. Appreciate that. Let me transition now to John Ambrose. Mr. Ambrose, is there anything you would like to add? You may be muted.
Some of this is redundant, but I want to say it for emphasis. For anyone that's looking at this, this was a very comprehensive, thorough report, review, and the team was in agreement at the end with, with the recommendations. I also want to thank and recognize the cooperation of the city staff. Going into it, there might have been some concerns about, you know, getting people to share their, their views. That was not an issue at all. We had great cooperation, and we also had great cooperation with regard to the high-risk issues that needed to go forward, Colleen and the staff to move forward on those high-risk issues immediately. So, and then one warning, I've done this in the, in the business world, there's been a lot of work to this point, but there's a lot more to go, and the baton is being passed now to council and staff to do it. So it's, it's going to take a lot to implement it, but it's going to be rewarding when you're done.
Thanks, John. Appreciate the perspective. And last, Mitch, Dr. Road, would you like to add anything?
No, other than I really appreciate the opportunity to participate with the committee, echo all the sentiments that were just mentioned, and just to advise council that it is a very dense amount of information, there's a lot there to chew on. And, and thus, you know, I would encourage everyone to, to read it over, chew on it, read it over again, and, you know, there's, there's a number of different layers there that you can delve into, and I'm certainly hoping for and looking forward to the city council and all the staff in the city taking that information and being active and using it to create a better place. Because as the former, as the other folks mentioned, this was an extraordinary amount of effort, there was a lot of thought put into it, a lot of folks throughout the city gave their time, and they're open and honest opinions and answers to, to contribute to what this is. And so I really appreciate what's going on here, and I hope you enjoy it, and I'm always happy to answer questions now or anytime looking forward. So thank you.
Very good. Hang tight, Mitch, because there may be some questions that, that you may be able to address. Let me piggyback on what City Manager O'Toole discussed as it pertains to steps moving forward. So certainly, the risk mitigation analysis in tonight's discussion will be talked about at, likely this week and in, and in the ensuing weeks at the city manager's weekly department head meeting. But as, as was discussed by myself, Ms. Champion, Mayor Protem Girba, and City Manager O'Toole last week when we did a pre-meeting for, for tonight's work meeting, I do think, and I have not, let me preface, I have not yet spoken to John, Jim, Rebecca, or Mitch about this, but I see some value in transitioning the worker group into an advisory panel for the remainder of the calendar year and likely meeting with the city manager and her leadership team once in the next couple of months, probably one time in summer, and then one time before the end of the year, just to talk about implementation and make sure that there is work being done to address those major deficiencies that were outlined on page six and seven of the report. And then when we reach 2022, what I would recommend, and Lori addressed this, Ms. Champion, is as part of our annual appointment process to establish a risk mitigation team to work with staff, and again, to ensure that there's a, there's accountability with this and that we are moving forward and correcting the, the issues and problems that were enumerated in tonight's report. With that, unless Lori or Dean have anything that they would like to add?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I would.
Please.
From my perspective, an appreciation of all the help that the group and the contributions that they brought forward. Mr. Green, and during our transition team, the group that helped support some of the ideas going forward to address the immediate needs in terms of the health and safety. So Mr. Green was especially essential in getting us to find the right consultant to bring in and address with that. And one of the things that I think that we don't realize in what brought forth in this discussion and interviews was the number of fail safes that we have within the community to support issues, especially during this pandemic. The Celine Area Social Services and the Celine Area Seniors stepped in and fulfilled aspects that none of us understood in terms of the need for food, the need for meal service when the schools shut down and could not, no longer provide those type of situations. So not only was this timely, but it brought about the concern that it does take a, a community to keep us supported, and those organizations are one of the things that we all as a, as a city need to look at and understand how we can continue to support them and make it a full, a full approach from which we support everyone within our community and be prepared for any kind of disaster, emergency, or anything else going forward. And it was glad, it was a good thing to know that we actually were there, and we have people in our community that are ready to step in and, and solve the problems when we need to.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protem Girba. Lori, anything else you'd like to add before we open it up for questions?
I'll just say again, it's a job well done by the whole team and by all the city staff who helped, so thank you.
Very good. So just, just so that we're crystal clear, my homework after tonight's meeting will be to follow up with John, Jim, Rebecca, and Mitch regarding transitioning the work group from a, a working committee to an advisory panel. And council should expect a memo to be attached to the April 5th agenda and for this item to appear under the consent portion of, of the April 5th agenda, transitioning the work group into an advisory panel and empowering them to meet three times in 2021 with the city manager to ensure that there is accountability and that efforts are being made to address the major deficiencies outlined in tonight's report. I do not have any questions. I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Dillon in just a moment. Let me again add that this was a phenomenal effort. I appreciate everybody who contributed, not just the, the members of the working committee, but also our staff and our external stakeholders. And I want to note that I have no doubt that in 12 months, 18 months, two years from now, we're going to look back and say that this initiative strengthened our organization in innumerable ways and improved operations to the betterment of our community and, and our residents. So I think it was, again, a phenomenal initiative, and quite frankly, I'm so proud of it, I would hope that it's emulated in other municipalities because I think numerous villages, cities, townships would benefit from this type of approach. So with that, I will turn it over to Councilwoman Dillon for questions, and you may direct them to the facilitator, Ms. Champion, or any member of the working committee.
Thank you very much. I do want to just start by saying thank you to Ms. Champion and the entire committee for sharing your time, a lot of time, to, in efforts to get us to this point. I think this is a very important document, and for me, at first, it was a little overwhelming. And I have to remember that this is some issues that we have, but there are so many other things that are working well and that complement this. And so when you, when you look at it from a positive standpoint, it's, it's a great document, and I'm looking forward to seeing it grow and, you know, and things move through it as they should. So Ms. Champion, I do have a question, like, as this is sort of a living document and you're assessing, like, annual reviews of it, at some point, would there be more of like a micro view, like quarterly, like, are we on task? Like, I guess, how do you make sure that you're hitting those benchmarks of, of moving from one category to the next and sort of clearing the decks?
That is a wonderful question. So sometimes we say this work, for all the time and effort that was put into it, is really sort of the homework, right? The real work comes in how you use it to, to make things better or it's appropriate to do that. And what I mean by that is obviously, you know, closing gaps or helping to move those risks down off the, the highest priority tiers to lower tiers. risks down off the highest priority tiers to lower tiers. Some best practices are to create a simple scorecard that incorporates the key next steps. So, what are the things that we're going to do and with what timeframe? And so, establish some kind of a tracking mechanism or scorecard on what the action steps are going to be, who's in charge, and what the time scale is. Establish an understanding of what cost, either in terms of dollars or people's time, is needed to address the risks, and then monitor that through a quarterly or monthly review. And I think that's part of the conversation that's ongoing in terms of having the working group now transfer to an advisory group that can help to take a pulse on that at some point in the future, maybe three or four months from now, whatever's appropriate, and help to take a perspective on how progress is being made and then how these actions are being prioritized. Now, I think you have to balance two things here. One is the value of that monitoring activity against, two, the time and energy it takes to review it on a, let's say, you wanted to review it on a weekly basis. That would be too frequent, in my opinion. I've seen people try to do it. It takes a lot of time. So you might do it monthly, or you might do it quarterly, but somewhere, there's going to be an appropriate balance between getting the updates and the amount of time that's spent on it. One thing I would say is very important is that, in the context of having the monthly or quarterly reviews and the annual update, you always leave room for a new risk or new concern to be added and escalate it if it needs to be. So we don't want people to think they have to wait for the monthly or quarterly meeting to add something new. Something comes up, there's a concern, need to get it to the city manager, if it's a big enough issue to the council for review and understanding and action as appropriate. If you do that, if you have a good disciplined approach to monitoring the activities that are appropriate and having a good oversight and combining that with the ability to escalate something if you need to, I think you've got a good framework that has some common sense to it and also enables that communication to happen quickly when you need it. I hope that's helpful.
That was. Thank you very much, because it really did segue into my next question, which I think you answered, which was sort of the ownership of tasks and making sure that there wasn't an undercurrent that was brewing that doesn't get brought to the surface until it becomes a high risk. So, making sure that there are those people and those systems in place that are monitoring and making sure that there are things that, you know, are maintaining, you know, some sort of stability.
And one of the reasons to have the advisory committee is also to provide that second level of review and accountability, to make sure that it's not just staff and council, but that we have some independent individuals, similarly like our auditors or whatever, that come in and also make an opinion of it and determine whether or not, you know, there's some additional rescoring or whatever that should occur.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Del Arco, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I would like to add is that I think it's important to highlight that although these risks have been identified and we're talking about this as now starts the journey of where we actually do the work with the roadmap that we've been provided, we have already, as a city, initiated a number of things that have needed to be addressed, and they're ongoing and in progress, particularly with respect to issues at the wastewater treatment plant, which was deemed one of our highest priorities. So I don't want anyone to think that the work hasn't started, because it certainly has.
I'd like to comment on that.
Please, Lori.
The city of Celine, everybody who participated in this did an exemplary job reacting when there were situations that were of high concern. I was very impressed with the consistency and the immediacy of the city looking at issues and taking action. So, the wastewater treatment plant was a feature in every meeting that we had throughout the entire project. Employee health and safety came up. We've already talked about that as an example. Employee relations, human resources, and the engagement of an HR consultant to help some of that. There were many examples, and the city didn't wait to take action and to start working on these issues. Not every organization does that well, but the city of Celine did. So I think that's important to acknowledge here as well.
Good. Thank you, Lori. Let's transition now to those participating remotely, and I'll begin with, I'll just follow the order that's enumerated on tonight's agenda. So let me begin with Councilmember Seo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to join my colleagues in thanking you folks who served on this committee for all the work you did. It's definitely appreciated. I just want to make a statement and then ask a couple of questions. The statement is that it kind of harkens me back to what we were doing when Y2K was coming along in the future. Now, we looked at a number of different issues, number of different risks, if you will, and tried to make sure that we had, we recognized what they were, number one, and number two, had a system in place to manage them if, in fact, they came to be. I think this presents us with an excellent roadmap for looking at the issues that we must face, and I think a lot of times, the first thing to do is get them stated out there in the open so that everybody understands that there is something there that we need to recognize and look at. I think that's a big first step in getting these things done many times. So many times, people kind of bury their head in the sand and figure things are going along swimmingly, and something jumps up out of the woodwork and bites you when you should have been fully aware of what was coming. So, thank you for the work you've done again, and I guess the only question I really have is that on page 11, in the important noteworthy and watch items, you just enumerate how many there were. Does somebody actually have a recording of what those were so that if we get down that far, we can individually address those as well?
Yes, that information has been shared with the city manager, so that is preserved and ready to be used by the city when the time is right.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Seo. We'll transition now to Councilmember Kamara Sulek.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, especially a big thanks to Ms. Champion and all the members of the working group. I can't imagine how many hours and thought went into this well-laid-out document. Thank you. This is excellent information. And I'm glad to hear, on one hand, I know that we've been working on significant risks like the wastewater treatment plant, but it's good to see the number of projects and risks that have been ongoing. So, as Ms. Dillon said, from a positive standpoint, there's more positives in this than I expected, and I'm very happy for that. I do have a question, you know, considering the high number of risks, and most notably, the 47 important risks, do we have sufficient staffing to address these important risks in a thorough and prompt manner using best practices? I mean, I'm concerned that we could be asking too much. Do our, does our city manager and department heads and staff have enough time with everything else that they're doing? Because they work incredibly hard and maintain a high level of service for the city through, you know, throughout our departments. So I'm, I don't want to overburden them, and, but I understand how important it is for these identified risks, and especially the health and safety concerns. And I'm glad there's some backups, some fail safes, but I think, I don't know if anybody can answer the question if we have sufficient staffing, but I think we need to be very mindful of what this document has outlined for the city so we can do it and keep a, you know, a high, a high level of, you know, accountability and get this work done.
City Manager O'Toole, did you want to address any of Councilmember Kamara Sulek's questions, concerns?
Certainly, and I think that's one of the reasons that I mentioned wanting to have myself and my department heads sit down with the group and discuss strategies for next steps. One, to help us prioritize, but really to prioritize within the context of what we're capable of doing. You know, to your point, if there's work that's beyond the scope of what we can handle in-house, we'll make recommendations for either, you know, identifying consultants to support our efforts with that, or expanding staffing capacity to address those long-term goals. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think it has to start with a frank conversation, you know, between me and my department heads with the advice of this committee on how we go about accomplishing these goals, you know, within a reasonable timeframe and not setting ourselves up for failure.
Perfect. I appreciate the thoroughness of your answer, and please keep us surprised. I know we're going to be going into budget sessions pretty soon here, so, you know, I look forward to making sure that we have the pieces in place that we need. And other than that, I am very pleased and so thankful for the endless hours that everybody in the working group has put into this, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Kamara Sulek. Councilmember Kraus, questions or comments pertaining to the risk mitigation report?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't usually, I try not to be redundant, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank everyone. This was way more, I heard about it while I was campaigning. I knew it was, I knew it existed, but until I got the packet, I didn't realize, you guys did a lot of work, and it's overwhelming, but Lori, thank you for, I'm so happy that you're part of our community, and thanks for your time and your expertise. I don't have a lot of questions. Ms. Dillon actually hit on a couple of my questions already. The one thing that I wanted to maybe address to Ms. O'Toole, if I may, and I think Ms. Dillon might have hit on it too, I want, if there's a dashboard so we can see which items are already being worked on, I know that many of these are already in process, and what stage they're in, what maybe percentage to completion, some sort of metrics and a dashboard, and so I know that's probably on the radar. And then I worry that with new items that come up, I love how, like Ms. O'Toole, when I have a question, she's very open and helps me out a lot, and I hope that that continues for the staff, if they have a new issue, that they feel comfortable coming and bringing it up, and, or if they need something to get that completed, very staff-centric, making sure that, like Mr. Kamara Sulek said, that we put them in a place where, all right, we know what we have to deal with, now let's do it. So those are my only two things, but this was amazing, and I'm still digesting, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Well, before we wrap up and transition to our second issue of the evening, Chairperson Girba or facilitator Champion, anything you'd like to add to end this discussion this evening?
Just one of the things, you know, we say 200 risks, and again, we need to understand that some of these risks are already currently being monitored. It's like internal controls. There's things that are already in place. What we did was we identified a risk that could happen and that we probably need to look at it. Any company will look at, do we have the internal controls put in place for our finance and handling cash and those so forth? Those things are probably in place, and we have an auditor that comes in and reviews that. So it's not as if all of these need to require action on it, but it is an issue that any common approach would say, you know, we should check this. And even from my own background, having done gap analysis and compliance reviews, you do that basically once a year, where for us, I think the biggest issue is how do we identify the resources and provide that kind of direction on an annual basis during our goal-setting and making sure that we make those a priority above other aspects, if that's how we're going to move forward in terms of making sure that operations and processes have a more weighted approach than mainly maybe some other necessity or thing that we need to do. I'm hoping that we can find the balance between that, and this document at least identifies a majority of what we really need to consider when we talk and when we review things. And each year, we should look at it and say, yep, we've done this, we've succeeded, we can set that aside, now we need to focus on these other events and issues, and then we just continue to do a review. It's just a good practice that we, as a city, can adopt.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Champion, anything you'd like to add before we wrap this up?
No further comments. Thank you all.
Very good. Well, appreciate your time, appreciate the presentation. It was very thoughtful and thorough. We would have expected nothing less. And I also want to thank the members of the working committee for attending this evening and providing comment. You're welcome to stay, but I understand we're all busy, so you are officially dismissed, and we will transition now to our second discussion item of the evening. Thank you again. And Sarah, can I ask that the screen transition back to, I guess, I don't even know what the verbiage would be. There you go. Right, I can see everybody. Excellent. And Sarah, Mr. Godfrey will be presenting and talking. Where would it be best for him to sit at that table?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Good. Thanks for being with us, Bill.
Hey, thanks for having us.
Yep. Make sure...
Let me, is that on? Should I leave my mask on, or what's the...
When you're talking, you can take it off.
Okay.
Unless you feel more comfortable with it.
No, I've been vaccinated.
Good.
Good to be here. Okay.
And that is on, Bill, so you won't have to touch anything.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us back. We really appreciate it. We're here to give you an update on our work with the Brownfield Authority and also answer any questions that you have about the plan, the draft plan submitted last week. I just want to make sure that Nathan and Ann Jamison are on the call. There's Ann.
I see Nathan.
Yes, I'm present. Hi.
Okay. Great.
Hold that a little bit closer to you, Bill, that microphone.
Okay. How's that?
Better.
Okay. So I'll just give you an overview, and then I think Ann's going to fill in a lot of the technical details, but we had a great meeting this morning with the Brownfield, the technical subcommittee of the Brownfield Authority, and they have vetted the plan now, both the initial draft and the subsequent draft, and are in favor and support the site being an eligible site for Brownfield TIP recovery, and also, they support the, they vetted the eligible expenses as well, and they are all expenses that would have been eligible back in 2015 and 16 when we were talking about doing the Brownfield plan. So, and the result of that vetting is substantial reduction in the amount of TIP recovery that we're requesting for the south parcel. That dollar amount now is fixed at around $150,000 to $175,000, depending on how you allocate the SOF costs. And the balance of it is really for the north project, which we hope to be in front of you in the next few months with a plan to, for what we'd like to do to develop that parcel. So I think it's a really good plan and happy that we were able to find common ground with the Brownfield Authority, and I guess I'll let Nathan and Ann weigh in if I've missed anything, but please feel free to weigh in.
Bill, real quick, just for my benefit, and then I'll turn over to, is it Ann? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Good. And Nathan. So just that I'm clear, and so my colleagues are clear, so tonight, obviously, we're going to address questions and concerns, and then we're going to transition into trying to develop consensus on this issue. For the purposes of tonight's meeting, are we just trying to develop consensus on the clawback for the southern parcel, or are we also trying to develop consensus on incentivizing development for the northern portion of the property as well?
Well, we certainly want look back, consensus on the lookback, right, Ann and Nathan?
That's correct, and we do need consensus on the consideration of the eligible activities on the north, which has yet to be developed. on the north, which has yet to be developed. And there, in, in that regard, we can move forward with the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's processing and approval of the Brownfield Plan at their next meeting. And then following that, the steps would be to come back to the city of Celine, for you guys to take a formal, you know, make a formal motion to concurrently approve the Brownfield Plan. And then from that point, we go on to the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners.
Right. Okay. So obviously, the, the, the lookback is more time-sensitive, but if we can also get, what I'm hearing is if we can also get consensus this evening on incentivizing additional development on the northern side of the property, that would be, that would be beneficial to both the authority and the developer as well?
Yes.
It, it's actually the adoption of the plan that's time-sensitive, not necessarily the individual, the lookback or the future eligible costs that will be adopted. We need to basically lock in the adoption of this plan by the fourth Monday in May to be able to optimize the eligible property tax increase so that basically the eligible cost under this Brownfield Plan are reimbursed in a quicker manner through the incremental increase of the taxes on the property.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry to muddy, muddy the water there, Ann. I just wanted to be crystal clear on what, what you needed from us this evening.
Mayor?
Please, Nathan. Yep, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify one thing procedurally. This initial meeting last week and this meeting tonight was sort of presentation, reintroduce council to the plan, the draft plan you saw, and it was in the packet for tonight. As Bill mentioned and Ann mentioned, we had a really productive meeting this morning with, by Subcommittee who are made up of experts in the field. And really, this morning was all about, you know, checking some of the numbers, checking some of the activities, making sure that the costs were reasonable, and I think we're 95% there. There was a couple little residual questions after, and you sent your updated table, and we can resolve that. But procedurally, you all have to take formal action on any plan prior to the BRA taking any action. So my understanding was, last week was going to be kind of thumbs up, thumbs down, and then there would be a formal action that you would take at a subsequent meeting on an actual draft Brownfield Plan. And the plan that's in your packet tonight is not the final, final draft that we would want you to take action on. It's really close. Some of the numbers are going to be tweaked a little bit, and so I think the plan was, I believe, as, as we talked to the mayor and to Mike, about how, and to the city manager, how we would do this, would be the, is there another meeting, maybe in two weeks?
Our next, our next regular meeting where we could take action would be on April 5th, so two weeks from tonight.
So the idea was, I think that night is where there would be sort of a formal.
Formal vote.
So, yeah, yeah. So tonight, for you, you, you all are in the driver's seat. You, this is a completely discretionary incentive. You all can decide all of it, none of it, part of it. And so that's, I think, what we're looking for tonight is what, what generally are you supportive of? And then Ann and Bill can prepare, we can prepare a final Brownfield Plan with, with the, based on the direction you provide for that April 5th meeting. And then after that, it would go on April 8th to the BRA, and then we would take it on to the BOC, and we think we can meet the timetable to sort of take advantage of that increase in taxable value that's coming for 2021 that Ann talked about.
Very good. Very thorough. Thank you, Nathan. Before we open up for questions, I'd like to provide the city manager an opportunity to share any remarks if she, if she has any. Ms. O'Toole, is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
No, I don't think there's anything specific I'd like to add. I, if, if councilmembers reached out, I, I feel like I responded to everyone that reached out with questions, but certainly if there's additional questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Very good. Well, hang tight, City Manager O'Toole, because I'm sure there, there may be some questions for you or your staff. So at this time, we'll transition to questions. Again, I don't want to get into developing consensus, this is strictly questions, either for Mr. Godfrey, our guest, Nathan or Ann, or the city manager. Again, I'll start with those who are present in the day, on the dais this evening. So the order for questions will be Dillon, Delorko, Gierba, CEO, Kamara Sulek, and Kraus. So I will begin with Councilwoman Dillon. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Just a couple for more for clarification, so I appreciate being here. I wanted to ask, I think you had mentioned previously that you chose not to pursue Brownfield initially, and why was that?
At the time, in my email that I circulated, I said that the cost benefit analysis at that time did not make sense, and so we, we did not file a, a Brownfield TIP application at that time.
And so what has changed?
The dollar amount is actually more than what we anticipated.
Okay. The dollar amount, excuse me, of?
The south parcel TIP is about $105,000. Now, before, when we looked at it, I think it was less than 50. We were, you know, this is really before we even got into the project. But so I think, you know, by the time, by the time you go through the effort of putting together a Brownfield Plan, the dollar amount, to me, and it really, really just wasn't enough at the time, but I think we're at a point now where it is. And then we also have this idea for the north parcel, and some of those costs on the north side are Brownfield eligible expenses also. So I think, looking at it in its entirety now, the project, both the south parcel and the north parcel, certainly warrant revisiting the Brownfield Plan in its current form. So that's kind of the evolution of it. From, you know, when we first started, there was nothing there except asphalt, concrete, some underground utilities that had to be worked on, a sidewalk and some gravel paths. And I think when we finally got done with all the work and the time it took to do all the work related to those demolition activities, which were spelled out in the demolition plan, the numbers came in a little bit higher than we thought.
Thank you very much for that explanation. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And then I wanted to ask probably Mr. Green or Ms. O'Toole, I'm not sure. What other Brownfield sites do we have in the city of Celine? I believe the Monroe Street property was a Brownfield, but other than that, have there been others?
I, I go first. Not, none that I know of. I know we have a couple that could potentially be eligible in the long term if projects come, if projects come forward and are requested, but I'd have to defer to possibly Mr. Gierba since he's been around, I counsel longest.
Yeah, I would ask Mayor Protem Gierba. The only other sites that I think could potentially qualify would be 147 Michigan Avenue, the location of a former Clark Station at the corner of Lewis and Michigan Ave, and then the former banks of Celine, the property currently owned by, by Addy. And those two could potentially qualify. Mr. Gierba, am I missing any?
No, 147 definitely. That was when it was first being reconsidered. That came forward, became, actually went to Washtenaw County for consideration. I can't remember exactly what all was involved in it, but I do remember that being approved by the council. And I believe that is it. The only other location might have been uptown, but at this point in time, that's not going to be redeveloped, so I don't think it would have been ever discussed in terms of, of Brownfield for Washtenaw County.
Thank you. And my next question is for Ms. O'Toole, which is, have our, has the city's attorneys reviewed the documents? Have they provided an legal opinion as to a direction in which they would recommend that the city move?
They, they have not yet, though I'm, I'm certainly happy to pass that information along and make that request.
Okay. And I just have one last question, is that, just for my own clarification, so we keep getting new drafts, and it, it's hard to understand what's changing in those. Is it just numbers? Is there other things that are changing? And why are the numbers changing?
The numbers are going down because as we vetted the Brownfield Plan with the Brownfield Authority, we removed some expenses that were not eligible. And I don't, Ann, nothing, I don't think, I'll let Ann weigh in on this, but I don't think the, the narrative changed at all, did it?
So, so the main, the highlights here in terms of the changes that are presented in the plan that we are presenting today that has changed from the last few, couple months ago, was the eligibility, we're qualifying the property as a facility, which means there's contamination present above direct, basically, the criteria that's presented by EAGLE, which is the Environmental Agency in Michigan. And so in order to manage those environmental issues on the north side in particular, we have expanded our cost and evaluation on the north. The majority of the focus is now on the north, with the exception of small amount remaining on the south. And really, that was, that was based on a process, as Bill stated, through, going through some vetting with the Subcommittee, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dillon. Councilmember Delorko, questions for our guests or for staff?
Thank you. I was hoping that either the city manager or someone from the Planning Commission could clarify whether or not there's been any final site plan approval on the north side of the development through the Planning Commission, or is this still in the early stages of planning?
He hasn't, Mr. Godfrey has not even presented a site plan.
Okay.
Yeah, early, very early.
Okay, just trying to understand that piece.
I didn't mean that in a put your word away.
We've got a sketch.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've been spending a fair bit of time trying to catch up on the history here, as this has been going on for long before I got on council. And just from trying to familiarize myself with the process of a Brownfield development being assistance with previously developed sites where there are barriers to redevelopment, the order of operations seemed a little backwards to me in that you're, you're coming to council now, asking to move forward with a Brownfield approval for reimbursement, in, in some respects for an area of land that's already been developed. And that point was confusing for me. I mean, the south side has been developed to the point of completion, is that not correct?
Near completion, I would say probably 80%.
Okay.
But the Brownfield legislation permits a lookback for expenses, so it's not, it's not without precedent. There are other Brownfield TIP projects in the state that have done lookbacks for costs that they incurred. In our case, we, I sent the emails to the entire council, I don't know if you happened to see those.
I did see some of that. So what's unclear to me, though, is the, the Brownfield is designed to reimburse developers for costs associated with environmental remediation.
Not just environmental really remediation. So under the Brownfield Financing Act, there's basically a list of different activities that are eligible. The city of Celine is a non-core community, so we're limited to demolition, environmental cleanup, hazardous materials removal, which we didn't have in this case. But demolition is an eligible activity, cost in a non-core. It's basically to level the playing field in order to get the property back to redevelopment-ready status. In this case, there was a significant amount of issues that they actually did run into on the southern parcel. Upwards of an increase in $800,000 plus that were added on to their overall development cost due to the Brownfield conditions, based on the fact that there was historic filling on that property that occurred historically over a number of years during the period in which it operated as a light industrial facility, and then switched over to ownership by the city of Celine, where subsequent filling of debris and concrete and sort of general construction debris occurred. So as a result of that, the cost significantly went up, but because this is, the city of Celine is not a core community, the eligible cost that normally would be considered an eligible item, such as removal of fill material and debris, is not an eligible cost within the city of Celine, and only demolition activities are eligible. So the request was scaled back from the original request because.
Can I interrupt you right there for just one second? I apologize. The demolition of these buildings that, from my understanding and reading the reports, took place in 2007.
That's correct.
And when you, when you acquired the property, the demolition of those buildings had already occurred, and you essentially inherited a vacant piece of land, accepting the asphalt and the concrete from the parking lot when, when you bought the property as is. Is that not correct?
That's correct. We're not asking for the reimbursement for the demolition of the buildings. We're just asking for the reimbursement of the asphalt, concrete, there was some underground plumbing, or plumbing.
Utilities.
Utilities that we had to deal with, and there was a sidewalk and a couple of gravel paths that needed to be removed. So it was just residual improvements that the city had done to the site that had not been removed yet, and so we, we just finished.
And you're maintaining that those are eligible expenses in which to be reimbursed for under the Brownfield Development?
That's correct.
We're just, we're just taking the guidance of the Brownfield Authority Technical Subcommittee, and the answer is yes.
Okay. I just need a clarification on that. So it's safe to assume that all environmental remediation that needed to take place on the southern portion of the parcel has been completed to the satisfaction of MDEQ or Eagle at the ti, Eagle now, before development commenced and, and the property was sold?
Yes.
That is correct.
I had a chance to at least have a cursory view of the environmental impact at this location, although there were no volatile organic compounds identified, there were a laundry list of, of heavy metals, including, that then exceeded the threshold in the generic residential cleanup criteria, MDEQ, namely selenium and lead, were the prior, primary concerns in the Phase 2 report in the baseline environmental assessment. There was arsenic, selenium, tetrachlorethylene, chloride, copper, lead, and sodium, all identified as sources of contamination, along with three storage tanks, two of which were diesel and one gasoline, that were excavated and had been determining, had been determined to have been a source of contamination as well. Do, do you feel confident that you're going to be able to remediate this, this property to the satisfaction of Eagle, given these concerns?
The south parcel's been remediated.
Yeah, so I, I, do you expect to find similar conditions on, on the north parcel?
No, we do not.
So, so it's not likely that that contamination leaked through groundwater and, across the railroad tracks or into that north side? And, and is there going to be environmental Phase 1 or Phase 2 studies conducted on that parcel as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Ann, if I'm, if I'm answering something that needs clarification or you want to fill in, please feel free to do so, but I think that's.
No, I, I think you answered the question sufficiently, because, yeah, the tanks were remediated, the areas that were removed, there was specific delineation to address any residual contamination, to rule out of any, any of the interim contaminants that would have been remaining and, and managed on the other site, so, yes.
We didn't remove the tanks. I think the tanks were gone before we came.
Correct, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they were removed, Barbie.
Long, long ago, yep. One final question I have is, if for whatever reason the north parcel isn't developed, can it be sold to somebody else, or is it considered one piece of land bought and sold as one piece?
It can be sold to, in fact, we plan to transfer it to a new owner during the development process.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Delorko. Let's transition to those participating remotely. I'll begin with Mayor Protem Gierba. Questions for city staff or our guests from the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority or Mr. Godfrey?
Regarding questions, when we talk about doing a retro, and this is for Mr. Voight, what type of precedent are we setting by doing a retroactive, I guess, Brownfield approval? I'm concerned that we'd have other lots that were potentially sold, people come back and would say, hey, why can't we have this now?
I think this is unusual, and this would be fairly unique. I think that these are highly case by case, and as it would. I think that these are highly case by case and it would be, uh, unlikely that you would have a similar circumstance presented to you. Um, but having said that, this was one of our concerns at the county level because we do so many of these plans all over, not just in Saline. That was one of the current concerns we raised early on, uh, to be frank, was, you know, were, were we setting a precedent? And the concern was the look back, period. It's not, it's, you, if for a local only plan, you have the authority and you have the discretion to do this. Um, would it set a precedent? It's probably unlikely, but it is, it should be a consideration. Uh, I don't know what your development situation is. I mean, we, somebody asked the question about what other brownfields you have. Ideally, this planning, uh, is done upfront, right? And we're not dealing with kind of figuring out things after the fact. Um, but can you do this? Yes. And, but should a, uh, the precedent be considered, uh, in the decision? Yes, as well.
Um, and I'm looking at, and you may not have this, but, or if you could recall, an email from back in 2015 that talked about, you mean, environmental remediation and so forth from Mr. Godfrey. And at that time was talking about, you know, the environmental conditions and the ability to repeat removal and soil stabilization and such. Um, why at that time was this probably not a, an issue with you at that, in the terms of that discussion?
Well, uh, it wouldn't have been, it's not a question of for me being an issue. I was, uh, I definitely was at a meeting with Bill and with Todd Campbell, maybe one or two other people, uh, his environmental consultant, and this probably would have been 15, 2015. And I remember we had a long discussion about potential brownfield incentives, uh, and, and my job was to be there to facilitate that process. Ultimately, it's up to the developer to determine, based on the information that, that's available, uh, and the costs that are known and the costs that could be unknown, you know, what's the best way to go? Um, so I was definitely part of those early meetings and, and for whatever reason and that some of the reasons Bill mentioned, uh, they chose not to pursue the incentive at that time.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, that's it. I do have some comments because unfortunately I'm the only one that's remained from that group. Roger Smith, our attorney, is no longer here. Mr. Campbell's gone and Mr. Rhodes was part of that, um, facilitating group. Uh, there are some other extenuating circumstances as to why this development was done in terms of financial arrangements and other things that I think council should take into consideration as they make their decision.
Yeah, Mr. Girba, if you'd like to share any of those remarks now, the, I, I would be happy to entertain those. You are correct. Uh, it was you, um, city, it was you and, and our former colleague, David Rhodes from City Council, who worked with, um, um, former city manager Todd Campbell and former city attorney Scott Smith on the, the sale of this parcel. So if you wanted to provide some background, I think that would be beneficial, not, not only to our colleagues, but also to the public who may be watching this or may be watching it in the future.
From my perspective, and there was a lot of back and forth in terms of how we were going to handle this property because we were concerned with some of the aspects of it. We didn't believe there was significant environmental contamination, but we did realize that there were some things that were on there. It was the back portion of the property was a natural swamp and some of that was filled with peat and so forth, and that would require removal and, and that nature. But we also did provide financial incentives in terms of the infrastructure so that that could be paid back over time. Um, we reduced, price was adjusted for that consideration, the financing. Um, so looking at that, there's a component of which we provided, um, in terms of the incentives to allow this property to be developed, which at this point, understanding that having a retroactive adjustment, um, seems inappropriate. Or not inappropriate, but questionable because we thought we were being straightforward at the time and each party understood exactly what was happening. And, you know, we were willing to move forward and provide incentives that we've never done before as a city. And at that time, that allowed for this project to move forward. And now, um, now it's kind of, you know, it's a, kind of a buyer beware. We understood what we were doing and they understood what they were doing. Now I'm just wondering, how do we move forward? And, um, we need to look at those aspects. We may need to go back and look at some of the conversations that happened within the emails and the, um, confidential agreements and stuff that happened with our attorney.
Uh, may I answer?
Please.
So there's a difference between incentives and financing. The city provided $250,000 worth of, uh, special assessment financing, which is almost paid back in full with interest. So the city loaned us money and we paid the city back with interest. I'm not sure how that is an incentive other than, uh, instead of having to borrow from our, another, our bank or put more money in ourselves, uh, you were a, a secondary lender on, on the project. So, and actually you were a primary lender because you were senior to our construction lender. So we do appreciate that financing and it was, it was set up primarily, uh, because, um, in lieu of, as, when, when we first proposed something to, uh, reduce the burden on the, uh, housing costs for the special needs adults and the middle market housing that Todd Campbell, uh, recommended, we include in the, in the development, which middle market housing, for people that don't know, is housing that would be priced for working families, uh, housing priced in the 225 to $250,000 range. So we redid our site plan to include 16 townhomes at 225. And we also included eight special needs condominiums for people that flat, just plainly don't have any money themselves to buy those houses. And we were looking for some sort of tax abatement or something to help, uh, uh, you know, offset the cost of low, of voluntarily lowering the price of the housing stock so that we could create a more diverse community in Saline. Uh, Scott said, you know, by law, it was, it was not, uh, easy or permissible, in fact, to do some of the things we were proposing, but he said, what we could do is we could provide some, uh, special assessment financing for the public infrastructure. And so we said, okay, that might help. It'll reduce the amount of cash we have to come up with from some other source like a lender or putting more money in ourselves. And so we went forward with that and we set up the repayment plan. So every single time a house closed, we paid $15,000 back. And when a townhouse closed, we paid 7,500 back. And I reduced the burden on the condominiums to 2,500 so that we could keep the prices on the condominiums lower and not have that tax exempt financing be a cost, a significant cost of those condominiums. So that's the backstory on the financing. That was, it was not an incentive where the city was giving up something. It was the city loaning us money for which we are, we really appreciate that. But we've, uh, we've got a closing coming up in another, uh, couple of days and that, and that will be the last payoff on that loan. It's one, I'm proud of the fact that we've paid it off. I mean, we, it's, uh, and we're, we're happy. When I talk about the partnership between us and the city of Saline, that's one of the main reasons that it's been a partnership because you were on, you were one of the, the investors or debt, provided debt and exchange received interest on that money. So, uh, thank you for the financing, but it was not an incentive. Brownfield TIF is different. It comes right out of tax revenue that we created. We create $240,000 worth of annual tax revenue off of, out of a brownfield property that had zero, had negative value for the city. And now there's 240 and we're talking about bringing in maybe another 50 to 100,000 on the north parcel. And we've paid the city in terms of, what we've paid the city in terms of fees and taxes and created this value. We're just asking for, uh, some help because we hit some, the brownfield expenses hit the point where we said, hold on a second, we do have to do a look back because, um, there, there are more than we thought there were going to be. And we're not even asking for the fill material, uh, that, uh, was not disclosed to us when we bought the property. We didn't know that Hoover Universal made it a standard practice to just bring in asphalt and concrete and, you know, old road debris and fill the low spots on the eastern half of the site. Uh, all the, all the, uh, environmental reports that were prepared for the city and all the questionnaires and all the interviews with all the city staff, that was never discussed. In fact, it was, it was just not discussed and I think it was just an oversight because it's typically not viewed as a, as an environmental issue. It was just, you know, filled with junk in it that we couldn't use again and it ended up costing us a lot of money. So, but we're not asking for that. We're just asking for the, the stuff that was in our demolition plan. It, the, the cost that we're asking for reimbursement for correspond exactly to what our demolition plan was in that, in the, in the site plan that was approved by the city. So I hope that clarifies the incentives and why we did what we did way back when. Those were very productive meetings and I'm proud of the work we did together, but I don't want to characterize the special assess, the special assessment financing as an incentive because it really wasn't. And it's almost paid back. We just have, uh, I think we owe $15,000 on it.
I think we can agree to disagree on what we were moving forward because a lot of the things we wanted to incentivize on that property was not only to allow for a PUD and development, there are a lot of adjustments for the number of coverage and green space and everything else. So there were a lot of give and takes on that property. As for your north property, the costs that are being requested to be reimbursed, are those all just for site improvement and just getting it real, uh, to be built upon? Or is it more than just that? Is it in terms of other installation of needed infrastructure or such?
So I, do you want me to touch on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Anne. I, I would just say it's just, whatever was eligible there, we, you know, we found some contamination on the site, but go ahead.
Yeah, so Dean, um, because again, this is not a core community, the only things that are eligible, um, under the Brownfield Financing Act in, in the city of Saline is the management of existing soils, in this case, existing soils that have been determined to be contaminated. So in our attached table one, that we have basically attached to the brownfield plan, it's very specific on the eligible costs that are eligible under the act. Um, we have determined that, um, you know, we have certain soil management practices that have to occur on, um, soils that are bermed at this point, they're, they're stockpiled there, that will have to be created into a landscape berm covered. We also have some areas where we had some mercury identified, um, that will have to be excavated and transported off to a type two landfill. Um, based on the proximity to the rail spur that transacts the north and south side of the property, some historic filling activities that were identified in previous reports, um, we just wanted to make sure that we had a budget going forward to address any environmental concerns, um, should we encounter, um, any future issues. To date, we have identified some of those costs and, you know, though, that's basically what we're requesting today as support for, um, to basically manage the environmental issues on the north.
Okay. How does the historical railroad use of that property also tie in? Is there any responsibility? I mean, this is putting it on the backs of this community in terms of forgiving, foregoing the tax revenue and so forth. Um, what would have happened if the, I mean, Ann Arbor Railroad still has some liability for it, I would assume. Does that ever play into this in any terms of, uh, responsibility?
Typically, no, not in a situation when you have a small rail spur. Ownership varied over the years. Um, there's really no viable liable party to go after. Um, it's, no, the, the short answer is this is not an unusual situation. This is basically a situation where there has been industrial and filling activities on a property where across, you know, Michigan, this is pretty much considered standard practice that the eligible costs that we're requesting are not above and beyond what is normally considered eligible and that the development itself is creating the taxable value in which the property is utilizing to reimburse for those taxes. Because currently that, actually that northern parcel had, until I talked to your assessor, had a zero taxable value still associated with it. There'd been never, it had never been even, uh, up until now, 2021, it had been valued at zero. Um, they're now putting a valuation on for land. Um, so if the development team wasn't willing to come in and do the redevelopment, the city of Saline would still be seeing, you know, zero taxes off of that property. So taking on the burden of redevelopment, having to deal with environmental contamination is part of what the whole reason behind the Brownfield Financing Act, why it was created, is to level the playing field for properties to get redeveloped in infill situations within our communities.
And one other question in terms of the development, does the cleanup and the preparation of that land have to tie to the actual development? There's a number of planning issues, zoning, use, those type of situations that would have to be approved. Um, so my question is, are we just approving the cleanup of the field for potential use or is the entire project having to be approved at the same time?
So, no, you today, like, as part of the brownfield plan, this has nothing to do with site plan approval, zoning, anything, that's a completely separate issue, which would be taken on at the time of site plan, um, submission. This is really just to deal with the environmental conditions on the site. It would be part of the overall development.
And again, the issue is reimbursement. So the only thing we would be paying, uh, would be eligible is the actual expenditures and you all validate those expenditures in terms of what deemed appropriate and can be, um, assessed against other, uh, brownfield cleanups and so forth?
That's correct. So basically, once those costs are incurred, um, following approval of a brownfield plan, um, we would track those costs. Um, we then submit those costs to a packet to, um, Washtenaw County's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and they verify those costs to make sure that those are eligible. So it goes through a vetting.
Okay. Thank you. Um, that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Girba. Let me transition now to Mr. Seo. Mr. Seo, questions for our guests or city staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Godfrey, thank you for clarifying those, uh, special conditions, if you will. I knew there was something surrounding the sale of that parcel, but I couldn't remember exactly what we had agreed upon and how it was going to work out. Thank you for clarifying, uh, what that was. I appreciate it. Um, I guess, I just want to make sure I understand exactly how this brownfield situation works. So we are, we are now being asked to approve, what will happen is if we approve this brownfield, the property taxes from, or a portion of those property taxes. Correct, which one? Is it the whole thing or just a portion of the property taxes is captured by the tax increment finance?
Mm-hmm.
Is it just a portion?
So it's only a portion because the initial taxable value, um, essentially is currently, um, based on what has been completed to date on the property. If you look at the tax tables that are attached to the, uh, brownfield plan, you'll see, um, a projection that goes out seven, eight years. Um, the first initial, the base taxable value, basically you guys have already gained as a community, um, a pretty significant increase in the taxes from when the, you know, prior, um, conditions were there. So the current taxable value is roughly 2.7 million. Those taxes we don't touch. Um, that taxable value remains untouched and any taxes that are a result of that go directly to the community. So I did provide at the bottom of that table, um, it basically shows what is coming to the city of Saline today. So as a result of the southern parcel's development, um, the city of Saline is realizing roughly $130,000, um, a year in local taxes only. So that goes to, I, I did not include state taxes. So it's, uh, you know, Washtenaw County operating, your local schools, like your ISD, you know, rec, um, solid waste city operating, right? Um, so you currently are receiving 130 roughly just from the development. Any incremental increase on the property value is only what we can capture. So when the property, if we were able to set the base year in 20, in 2021, we do realize an increase in value due to some sales of homes that the assessor now put on the book for 21. So that's roughly 40,000 we would receive in 21. So we're starting to pay down the property eligible costs quite quickly, um, quicker than most plans. Um, and then as improvements continue on the south parcel, because we're still finishing the build out on lot 19, on the number of, um, property there, um, it goes again slightly up. So we see an uptick to about 78,000 a year. Um, and then the final phase, which is really the addition of the northern parcel improvements, the final valuation increases to roughly 6 million, if only three of that we can capture, meaning taxable value of it. Um, so we're looking at roughly ending out with, uh, roughly 120,000 a year. The nice thing about this plan is it's a very short brownfield- Brownfield plan. Most Brownfield plans that I work on within the state of, they're usually 20 to 30-year plans.
This is what, seven?
You what?
This is seven.
This is a seven-year payback period, in which the majority of, no, all the eligible costs are repaid within that time period. There is two tables. There is a capture table, which is the first tax increment finance table that shows the amount of dollars available for capture. Then there's a second tab, which is the reimbursement table, and that shows where the property taxes go to. So we have them broken out between environmental, the 465,000, 364, which by the way, has been slightly reduced, and roughly 110,000 now for the non-environmental, which is the demolition activities. Again, which is not unusual to get covered on a retroactive basis. Even the Michigan Economic Development Corporation considers demolition a retroactive eligible cost for reimbursement. So this isn't something that's just done only locally. But this is such a small amount, we wouldn't petition the state to participate. So that's basically how, it basically, the payback period is a reasonable payback period. This community is receiving a benefit now from the development. So it's not as if the developer is taking all of the tax revenue away from the community. It's a proportional, it's almost like a 50-50, if actually less, it's more like, you know, from the beginning, 25, 75, and then it increases to, you know, more of a proportional cost share.
All right. One more question. Mr. Vo, this is for you. So by virtue of us running this through the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, does any of the money stick there in this circuitus?
Yeah, we have costs to run our program, my salary and other expenses. So for all of our plans, we will ask to capture anywhere between 3% and 10% of the annual capture for what's called administrative fees. And then there's another fund we have called the Local Brownfield Revolving Fund, which up until five years ago, it had no money in it. And now we've got mostly a lot of Ann Arbor projects that are putting a lot of big deposits in. And so we try to spread that as well around and have all of our projects contribute some funds to that fund as well, because the city of Celine would be eligible then to get grants and loans from it to help future projects. So those are the two areas where we take a percentage of the capture to help for those couple purposes.
Okay. I understand much better now. Thank you all for your explanations. And Mr. Mayor, I guess at this point, I'm in favor of both the look back for the southern portion and the perspective for the northern portion.
Okay. Well, hang tight with that, Mr. CEO, because I'm gonna, I still have to get questions and comments from two other council members, and then we'll do a round robin and see if we can develop consensus. But I appreciate those remarks. We'll transition now to Councilmember Kamero Sulak. Questions for our guests, Mr. Godfrey, the folks from Brownfield Redevelopment, or staff?
Right, yes. Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. A lot of very thorough questions have already been asked. So what I think we're getting close to is figuring out what the cost benefit is to the city and the development. So I think a cost breakdown, just kind of showing the tax revenue benefit to the city versus the development would be really helpful to really pinpoint and see it, whether it's in a spreadsheet or something that we can put our eyes on and feel comfortable with, would put me at ease.
Sir, if you could go to your Brownfield plan and in the attachment,
Mm-hmm.
described as tax increment revenue capture estimates?
It's the last page, isn't it, Anne?
It is, the last two pages. There are spreadsheets in there that do exactly that. It breaks out-
Numbers are pretty small, but-
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's all right.
Sometimes it's better if you go on your screen and look, because we're all going to go blind looking at it there. But that, what that does, it does break out what each taxing jurisdiction contributes to the plan. And then at the bottom, I have a roll-up that basically shows the tax capture for the local unit of government per year that the community is receiving. So that it breaks it out very specifically for each of those taxing jurisdictions, as well as what is being contributed to the project already from the tax base that has already been created as a result of the southern development.
But Anne, I would just say, we could put together a nice graph or something that shows that, like, something like we did when we did that PowerPoint, and it showed our portion versus the city portion.
Certainly, if you, we are, yeah, we actually, Kevin, we actually already have that available. So we can just send you over the PowerPoint, which gives you a percentage, breakout pie charts. It's real, like, nice to see visually.
Right. Yes, that would be great, so that it's really clear, because there's a lot of really small, well, a lot of different line items on here.
Yeah. We will circulate that PowerPoint. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bill.
Anne, we need to update that PowerPoint with the current plan, the numbers in the current plan, because I think they've shifted a little bit, not a lot. Actually, our portion's gone down, unfortunately, and the city's has gotten bigger, so we want to-
Yeah.
Okay, Anne, just one last thing, and I apologize if this was already addressed. What is your, what's the timeframe estimation for the north parcel being development starting and completed? Just like a rough estimate, I'm sure that would be in part of the development's financial analysis and planning, but just to give us a rough estimate.
Anne, I can answer that.
Yeah, I was going to defer to Bill.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I think that if we got in front of, we got our initial preliminary site plan to staff in the next 90 days, and then got it to a point where the Planning Commission could look at it, and then we do those meetings, and then the city council meetings, I think we, you know, if we can get the approvals in the next 12 to 18 months, then the project itself will probably take, you know, 18 months to build. So that puts us pretty close to the end of 2023, maybe even 2024. I think in the assumptions for the Brownfield plan, Anne, when did you have the revenue kicking in?
We assumed that by the end of 2023, that you're, the project would be significantly complete, and then you'd have an increase in taxes for the northern portion in 2024.
Right. So that's our timeline at the moment.
Okay, great. And how does that compare with your timeframe for the south portion that I think you said was 80-some percent complete? When did that start, and when was it projected to be completed?
Well, without COVID and some of the other delays we encountered, we probably would have been done probably six months to a year ago. Some of it also has to do with the winter conditions. Once you get into the winter, it slows, foundations, concrete work has to come to a stop sometimes because the weather's too cold to pour concrete, can't do any outdoor exterior painting. But we started, we closed on the land in October of 2017, and we'll be done by September of 2021, so four years. And then the planning process was probably a year and a half.
If that.
Yeah, a year to a year and a half.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, it's a little hard to hear you. So you plan on being completed by September of what year?
We are looking, we're projecting right now an estimated completion for the entire south development, Maple Oaks, of September of this year.
Of this year? Okay, great. And-
That's about four years from when we brought-
Okay, great. Anne, I'm sorry, I just thought of this last question. As far as the demand for the north portion-
Good question.
What is yours, did you perform a survey or a projection for the local demand?
Well, the second and third, there's enormous demand for the special needs apartments. And yes, we did do a survey for that and had a very strong response. Unfortunately, we only could build eight condominiums, special needs condominiums on the south parcel. So we are adding two more four-bedroom apartments. We either have to do that or do four two-bedroom apartments. We have to work with the county on that. And then the rest of them will just be market rate apartments, ranging in rent from 1,200 to 1,500 a month, maybe 1,200 to 1,300 a month. But we have not done a market study on the demand for the 14 units that we're going to build that are market rate, but we plan to do that. And then on the first floor, I've actually had some conversations with leasing brokers locally who think, who have tenants, prospective tenants, looking for space right now, some pretty significant commercial tenants that would be interested in taking some of that first floor space. The idea would be to allocate at least half of it to special needs enrichment activities so that our IDD homeowners and renters would have somewhere to go during the daytime. And the nonprofits are very excited about having a space that they can call their own. So our idea is, the footprint for that first floor is about 6,000 square feet. So we're hoping that at least half of it can be dedicated to special needs enrichment activities, developing life skills, training, recreation, social, hangout stuff. So that's kind of where we are in terms of our feasibility analysis. The land's paid for, except for the Brownfield work that has to be done. So that certainly helps the numbers.
Okay. And you said some of it is going to be apartments, not condominiums?
It's all for rent. Yeah, this one's going to be for rent. A lot of our, when we did our survey, a lot of people couldn't afford to buy the condominiums, but they were still interested in being part of this inclusive community where you had special needs adult homeowners and living next door to people that were neurotypical and bought market rate homes. And that's probably the biggest success of the development is that those two groups of people are homeowners together and neighbors and living together in total harmony. There's virtually no issues, no issues.
Okay. I love the plan. I really appreciate the inclusivity that you've brought for special needs and neuroatypical community members. I wish there was more of this. So that part I'm very excited about. To be honest, that's something that our community desperately needs, what you're bringing to the table and more of that. So that's all the questions I have for now. I'll yield the floor to Ms. Kraus.
Very good. And finally, Ms. Kraus, questions for our guests or city staff?
Thank you. Well, most of my questions have been answered. I thought I read somewhere that the taxes and utilities were behind on this property, so I wanted to make sure I understood where that was.
They'll be taken care of in the very, within the next week. I talked to Mike Green about that today there. And I talked to Pam Zaminsky also this week. Four of the units were overvalued significantly, so they've been adjusted. So now we can pay that. One of the houses was supposed to close, it got delayed, so that's why the taxes are still outstanding. And then some of them are, we need to catch up on some of them. But we, I told Mike Green we'd take care of that.
Okay, so the plan is to catch all that up pretty soon here in the next week or so?
March 30.
Yep. Okay. Another question I had is, maybe this is for Mr. Voight, 3% to 10% goes back for administrative, and some of that funds this grant funding mechanism. I'm interested to know what types of grants have come out of this funding mechanism, to see, obviously, looking in the future, what types of grants have been successfully awarded from funding?
Right. So the first piece was just our administrative fees kind of helping run our program. Then the other piece was that Local Brownfield Revolving Fund, which I think you're asking about. We've been able to help three different projects, one in the city of Epcot, to clean up PCBs along border-to-border trails through Water Street. That was our first one. The next one, we gave 600,000 to the Ann Arbor Housing Commission to provide affordable housing, to do some of their redevelopment of the Swift Run, State and Henry Development. And then the last one we gave was to the city of Ann Arbor. They were trying to get a grant for a playground at the Leslie Science Center and discovered a whole host of problems. It was totally unexpected. We were really, it was a great partnership, and they're super appreciative. We were able to give them the environmental cleanup funds to deal with a lot of stuff that they found at the Leslie Science Center. So happily, we've been able to give three grants to our partners so far. And, but they are available to developers as loans. So the policy now is grants to municipals and nonprofits, and loans are available to private entities.
Okay. And one more question. How common are these retroactive asks?
Well, it's very common to have any sort of due diligence, like the Phase 1, the Phase 2. That's very, very common. It's not very common to have a retroactive going back this far.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all. And again, Anne and Nathan, thank you for being here. Bill, remind me, because I don't have the page in front of me, the latest number, your most recent request for reimbursement for the clawback is, what's the dollar amount?
The clawback for expenses is 105,800 for site demolition, dust control, management, removal of debris, engineering, surveying, and staking.
Okay.
105,800. And then there's, there are some expenses. Oh, go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, that's just for the environmental lookback, which is typical. So really 105 for the demolition.
That's for the lookback, but then the rest of it's just for, like, Phase 1, Phase 2.
Yeah, that's standard. Yeah.
Which is 50,000, so.
And that's for the subsequent development?
Well, it's going to be split between the two. It's not, it's kind of just in there, in the budget. But, you know, even if you allocated that, the soft costs, you're looking at about 150,000 for the south parcel's share of the tip reimbursement.
Okay, 150 estimate. Okay. All right, we're going to transition just a moment to comments, and I would like to develop consensus. If folks are not ready to develop consensus on this issue and are inclined to request additional information, that we will accommodate, of course. But I will note, per the petitioner's request and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, we do need to develop consensus on this issue and take a formal vote no later than our next regular meeting on April the 5th. So with that, let me make just a few comments. First, it goes without saying, the Maple Oaks development at the former service site, which was municipally owned for several decades and generated no tax revenue to the city, has been a phenomenal success, I think by every account. And I would love to see a future development on the north side of that parcel. And I think Mr. Godfrey and his associates are best equipped to develop the north side of that parcel. Therefore, I would support incentivizing in any way development of the northern parcel and doing whatever we can per the statute to help accommodate that. Now, as it relates to the lookback for the southern parcel, and I've had the opportunity to speak to Bill about this issue a number of times, I've also spoken to Nathan Voight at the county several times. We are statutorily permitted to engage in a lookback. However, as has been noted earlier this evening by our guests and others, it is unusual. And in an ideal world, the due diligence would have been done in advance. That being said, I do understand that there were some inherent challenges to developing the southern parcel that were not of the developers. Developer did not create the situation that proved problematic and difficult. And as a result, he and his associates incurred some additional costs. So trying to balance those two sentiments and hopefully broker a compromise with my council colleagues, again, 100% support in- council colleagues, again, 100% support incentivizing development on the north side. A round number has been mentioned this evening of $150,000 relating to costs for the southern parcel. I guess what I would propose and what I would be amenable to is splitting the difference and incentivizing $75,000. But those are my thoughts. We'll see how the rest of council feels. Let me turn it over, and we'll do the same order. So I'll start with those in the dais and then transition to those participating remotely. I'll begin with Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to circle back. You had made a statement that you were going to transfer ownership of the north parcel. Will that parcel be sold?
When you develop, the owner, I'm sorry. The owner of the property right now is 600 North Maple, which is the developer of Maple Oaks, the residential neighborhood. Maple Oaks North is going to be an apartment building with, it's going to be a mixed-use building with apartments on the second and third floor and commercial on the first floor. We are going to certainly transfer the land into a new LLC that's more of a more appropriate owner for that parcel. And then that entity may end up selling it to a third party. There's one large investor in particular, but there may be others. So, yeah, we are, 600 North Maple will transfer ownership of the north parcel to a new entity that can go forward with it without any, without, you know, and have it be a standalone entity.
Okay, thank you. And maybe Mr. Girba would be able to answer this question. And I'm sorry for asking questions, I just want to sort of make sure that I'm looking at this holistically. Mr. Girba, do you remember if this was what was envisioned for the north parcel originally?
My memory fails me on this, I can't recall. I knew we were talking about potentially some other development being done on it, but I don't remember exactly. But I believe this sounds familiar in terms of what was going to be done with it.
Okay.
But the commercial aspect would be a rezoning and a number of potential hiccups because we've been really rezoning all of that area to residential, not to commercial.
Right. Okay, I appreciate that. I would, Mr. Mayor, ask that I would like to see some information, an opinion from our attorneys prior to making a decision, as well as a cost analysis from the city's finance department.
So what specifically are you looking for in a cost analysis?
I would like to see how the impacts on our side.
The amount of tax revenue that we.
We're getting data right now, and the data that we are receiving, I just want to see that it matches what the city's expectation is, what the future numbers would be in the timeframe for that.
Okay. Let me defer to the city manager. Ms. O'Toole, are you still with us?
Yes, my apologies. I've been intermittently losing my internet service.
No, it's quite all right. Did you hear Councilwoman Dillon's request?
Yes. So in addition to the attorney review, looking for our finance department, basically to review the numbers outlined here, I will say we'll need to see that updated plan now that the numbers have changed slightly in terms of the near final ask.
Yeah.
But once we have that information, we can run it against our internal projections for tax revenue on that parcel.
Very good, yep. I see no reason to object to either request. I guess my ask, Mr. Godfrey, if between you and your associates you could get updated numbers to the city manager in the next couple of days, because we will want to run those numbers and do an analysis concurrent to getting an attorney's opinion, and then provide those in the council packets well in advance of our October, October, boy, April 5th meeting. Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, this is Ann Jamison. I would like to state that I directly have been working with your assessing department, with your assessor, to run the tables. We have sat down and gone through all the numbers to make sure that the estimates that we are providing are on task with what the projections are that the city assessor is comfortable with. So I just did want to make that statement that we have done our homework.
Very good. No, I would expect nothing less. I appreciate that, appreciate that, Ann. Councilmember Dillon, anything further?
I think that that's it at this point. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Del Orco?
I think my position closely mirrors that of Councilwoman Dillon's. Given that this is a retroactively applied Brownfield ask, looking back for the southern parcel, and that's deemed somewhat unconventional, with the due diligence not having been performed upfront, I just want to make sure that we're not voiding contractual obligations, that we don't open ourselves up to anything moving forward with future developers, and I would like to solicit a legal opinion from the city attorneys.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Let's transition to those participating remotely. Mr. Girba, Mayor Portem Girba, excuse me, anything you'd like to add?
I concur with my fellow councilmembers that have previously spoken. The only aspect that I understand the northern parcel and the concerns with that, and if there is more of an environmental issue in that perspective, then I see no reason why we wouldn't want to support the Wasna County Brownfield approach for it. The retroactive, for me, is more of a concern of setting precedent and understanding what occurred in the past. So that's my two cents.
Very good. Mr. CEO, Councilmember CEO, you stated your opinion, but if you'd like to share anything else, you're welcome to do so.
I just have a couple of quick questions, if I might. Is that rail spur going to be shortened? Is it going to be removed from the property if the northern parcel is developed?
No, we aren't allowed to do anything with the rail spur. That's the property of the Ann Arbor Railroad.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, are there any special needs persons occupying the larger building on the property now?
Yes. Jacob lives there and Billy lives there part-time. Another family actually lives, the parents live with their son part of the time, but they're up north right now. But they've all closed, and they all have been spending time in their apartments, or their condos. One thing we, this is totally unrelated, but the transition from living with your parents to living independently takes a little bit of time.
Dave?
Okay, thank you. Well, Your Honor, I heard what you said too about trying to split the baby there. I'm still in favor of what I said originally, that unless the attorney comes back with some opinion that would cast us in a bad light, I'm still in favor of going ahead with the entire ask.
Very good. That was clear, Mr. CEO. Appreciate that. Mr. Kamara Sulak?
Yes, thank you. I also concur, consistent with wanting a cost analysis. I think it's best practices for that to be done by city staff and make sure we have all the information and that it adds up. And then, of course, very appropriately, getting our legal opinion straight on this so that we're making the best decision, especially considering this is an unconventional look back. So we're making the best decision for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kraus?
Thank you. I think that I agree with the attorney review, so everything that has already been covered. But I have to go with Mr. Girba as far as the retroactive. I'm unsure about that. As you really start to see the decisions that you make now affect further out, and so that would be a precedent setting, so that one I'm not sure on yet. I do like the idea of this development in general, though.
Very good. So, Bill, Mr. Godfrey, excuse me, you'll get us some updated numbers. Obviously, we're already in the process of evaluating those. Staff will make sure to develop a memo and put that in the council packet for April the 5th, along with an opinion from our attorneys at Dickinson Wright. I would ask my colleagues, you have a two-week period between now and April the 5th. We will certainly accommodate and get you the information you requested, but per the petitioner's request and statements made by our friends at the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority this evening, you need to be in a position to make a decision on April the 5th. That's a two-week period to gather additional information and ask questions. So if you do have questions or concerns, please direct those to the city manager. In her three-month tenure with us, she's proven to be, well, she's proven that she moves very expeditiously to address questions and concerns. So please use her as a resource should you have outstanding issues. Mr. Godfrey, is there anything that you would like to add this evening before I dismiss you and hope that you'll put on your schedule April the 5th and join us again for a third meeting?
I just have a couple of things I'd like to say in closing is, first of all, we're in favor, obviously, of the full amount of the look back, and so our ask is still the $150,000 in total, but the actual look back expenses are $105,800. And if you were going to split the difference, that would be the proportion to split. The other expenses are just part of the Brownfield plan.
Yep.
So it would be a $50,000 compromise, not a $75,000. But again, we're in favor of the full ask at this point in time. My other thing is just thank you so much for considering this. I know it's unconventional, but we think it'll really make a difference in terms of our being able to go forward with the north parcel, getting the TIF on the south parcel as well as the north parcel. So the two are not completely separate, they are connected. And again, my partners and I very much appreciate the time that you've given us and the Brownfield Authority too, Nathan. Thank you, Nathan, and thank you, Ann Jamison. And if the city attorney wants to reach out to our council for questions, we have John Vile, who helped write the Brownfield statutes for the state of Michigan, who is working with us on this project, and he'd be available to answer questions for your city attorney.
If our attorney or staff have questions, Bill, we will use him as a resource.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Nathan, Ann, anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you very much for your time. Really appreciate you taking the time to reconsider this project, and I reflect, and it's been a privilege to work on this project because of the type of project that it is. I mean, what a great thing for your community.
Dave, it's a special Brownfield project, for sure. But we appreciate your time, and Nathan's, and thank you for addressing a litany of questions and concerns. You did an excellent job with that tonight. Appreciate it.
No problem. Have a great night.
You will. Yep, we'll see you on April the 5th. If there's nothing further to be brought forward this evening, the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:48 PM. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Dillon, seconded by Mayor Portem Girba. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
I don't know what's going on, but the internet in this, I keep on saying this about, in this building, it's just, I constantly, I had on.